Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 3rd, 2012 City of Waukegan City Council Meeting. Okay, thanks. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moiseaux.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Vera.
Present.
We have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this evening, we're going to have, during the mayor's comments times, we're going to have three quick presentations by some community folks that are here today. The first one will be Jane Ferry, representing Waukegan Pinkout. Oh, there you are.
On behalf of Coach Ashlaw, the boys' basketball team, and the great Waukegan Pinkout Committee, I'd like to thank the mayor, the aldermen, and all of you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the great Waukegan Pinkout, which you probably haven't heard about yet. So let me start with a short history, then we're going to do a little bit of goals, and finally, how we can all be involved in this great community event. During the last two Waukegan High School Boys Basketball seasons, the team and coaches have designated one game, Pinkout Game, and that is to raise money for cancer awareness, education, and research. The idea for Pinkout came from a variety of sources, but mostly because the coach wanted the team to look outside of themselves and get involved in the community itself, and he also had just learned about coaches versus cancer, which is a fundraising element of American Cancer Society. While the coach is aware that the color for all cancer survivors is actually purple, pink stands out much more in a school whose colors are purple, green, and gold, so he went with the pink. For the first two years, T-shirts and ribbons were sold at the high school and during the games, and they raised about $4,500 to fight this disease that has taken so much from so many. This year, they're thinking much bigger. They have decided, instead of containing everything within the high school, to actually roll it out to all Waukegan public schools, as well as the community. They have set two nice-sized goals for this. The first one is to pack the pound, or the Washington Campus Gym, on February 1st, 2013, which is the Pinkout Game, with 3,500 people wearing these Pinkout shirts. And the second one is a monetary goal. They would like to have $10,000 in donations. The money will be raised through the sale of Pinkout shirts again. Each shirt costs $10, with $5 going back for the donation. With the sobering statistic of one in every two men and one in every three women in their lifetime experiencing cancer, they feel that their money will be far-reaching and also be local. One of the local things that's supported is the Road to Recovery, which offers free rides to cancer patients to chemotherapy treatments. So how do they intend to reach these goals? Well, the first one is through the schools. The schools have established four order days and delivery days for T-shirts, with one point person being the volunteer who's coordinating all of that at each school. I'm really pleased to say with the first two orders that 500 T-shirts were sold, so we're off to a really good start. Also, within the school, the team and committee is working to secure support from the principals who have dress codes or uniforms to allow kids to wear their Pinkout shirts on one or two dress-down days, so that they get a little use out of their shirt, just on February 1st. We have already presented to the school board to have Pinkout Day declared across the whole district, and they were on board with that. We are presenting the school that raises the most money with something special, and that is most money per capita, so bigger schools aren't necessarily going to win. And to remind the kids that the fight against cancer is 365 days a year, we are also going to invite the kids who have Pinkout shirts to come to American Cancer Society Relay for Life Greater Waukegan Far North Shore on June 22nd, 2013. From the community side of things, we're working, we have worked with, or are working with, three different businesses to create the logo on the shirt. That was a local Waukegan business, and two local Waukegan businesses are printing the shirts. We are also presenting to community and civic organizations, asking for their support by buying T-shirts, spreading the word, and liking us on Facebook. We are suggesting that local businesspeople wear Pinkout shirts if possible. In fact, Jim was just talking to Chief Greathouse about whether the police might wear it at the game on February 1st. We are offering discount tickets for anybody who is wearing a Pinkout shirt on February 1st to the game. And we are selling T-shirts at the Harbor Place during Art Walks and Holiday Walk this Saturday. And Harbor Place is where Greentown Tavern and Joplin's Java is, just so that you know where we'll be. And finally, we're here tonight, asking the mayor and the city council to proclaim February 1st, 2013, Great Waukegan Pinkout Day across all of Waukegan. It would mean a great deal to the kids, who have put in a lot of effort into this, and also to point out that the cancer awareness, education, and research is important to everybody in the city of Waukegan. Are there any questions? Thank you all very much for your time, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you for buying T-shirts for your staff.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Jane.[404.03][404.03](APPLAUSE).
Your honor?
Your honor? Should we make that motion now?
No, let's wait.
Okay.
We'll do it in the next, we can do it at the next city council meeting. We have time.
Before we go any further, I'd just like a motion to seat Alderman Cunningham.
A motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Newsome to seat Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Next, we have Peter Krakenberger, who is the Waukegan High School Boys Basketball Team coach? Or assistant coach?
Assistant coach.
Assistant coach, okay.
Ron gets all the credit, wins and losses. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, my name is Pete Krakenberger. I'm an assistant boys' basketball coach at the high school. Over the course of the last five years, the Waukegan Boys Basketball Program has consistently been a beacon of interest in both Waukegan, Lake County, the state of Illinois, and even nationally, playing on ESPN. A great part of that success has been attributed to the consistently supportive and growing fan base over the years. Over the past five years, an average, an estimated 66,000 fans have watched 54 varsity boys' basketball home games for the Bulldogs. The Waukegan program this year is looking to partner with their future success with local businesses, organizations, and individual supporters. This season, the Waukegan Boys Basketball Program will be introducing the new season program. This is an opportunity for businesses to place advertisements, well wishes, coupons, and discounts in a program that will be distributed at all Waukegan Boys Basketball Home Games, as well as the Waukegan IHSA Sectional, which is coming back to the Dog Pound this year. Businesses may offer their discounts in the form of ads from $50 up to $550, and we hope that this new partnership opportunity is one you will take advantage of. With your help, we can continue to move Bulldog Basketball and our local business partners forward. I can be contacted with anyone who is interested in placing an ad. My email address is on the letter being distributed in the room, and is also pkrakenberger@wps60.org. Copies will be available also out in the hallway after the meeting. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Pete. Next, we have Alexander Kostakis, who is a volunteer engagement specialist from the Center for Economic Progress.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Alexander Kostakis, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I work for the Center for Economic Progress. We're a nonprofit organization based in Chicago, but that works in the Chicagoland area. Since 1990, we've been working to help hard-working families move from financial uncertainty to financial security, and we do this in a number of ways. One of those is free tax preparation during tax season, also financial coaching, and representation for individuals facing disputes with the IRS. Tonight, I'm here to speak to you a little bit about the free tax preparation, and specifically looking for volunteers in the community to support the tax preparation that we run from January to April. So, across our network, we run in 13 locations. That's been downsized a bit from last year. We were statewide, but they're all supported by volunteers who have been trained and received training from us to prepare taxes. Across the entire state last year, we returned or filed over 17,000 tax returns, which saved our clients that are not paying anything for these services over $3 million, and returned to those clients over $29 million. Again, $29 million to hard-working, low-income families across the state of Illinois. So we have two primary volunteer roles that we're looking for and hoping we might have support in the community for. One is the tax preparer. As a tax preparer, you need no experience with taxes. You would receive all training from the Center for Economic Progress. That's both online training and classroom training that would take place in January. In Waukegan, it's at the Father Gary Graff Center on January 3rd. And 10th is the classroom training. The online training is open now and available as soon as you register. The taxes are a little intimidating. We also look for tax site assistance to facilitate intake and help keep things organized. So like I said, training is provided free of charge, both online and the classroom training on the 3rd and the 10th of January. If you do register, then you will have access to that training information and the training online as soon as you register. Also have access to the volunteer schedule, so you could look at the calendar for every day that it's open between January and April, and just click which times you would like to volunteer. So, when you do look at those shifts, if you do, it will be Tuesday and Thursday evenings and Saturdays during the day this year. So, as you can imagine, this is supported by the community, and it's for the community. All our volunteers come from the places where we operate these tax sites, as well as the clients coming and receiving these services. So I encourage you not only to think about perhaps yourself volunteering, but any organization that you are a part of, we would be very happy if you could distribute the information, make it known in the community, so that there is the support to operate this tax site during tax season. The tax preparers that work with us, the volunteers, specialized in the earned income tax credit and child tax credits, both that are, especially the earned income tax credit, which has been shown to be a good anti-poverty measure. Many of the returns that clients receive do go back into the community very quickly, spending it on things like groceries. So, these are tax credits that are important, especially in a time like this. So like I said, if you have access to any network where you could distribute this information, I saw there are flyers out on the table. I wish I could stay around to talk after, but I do have to catch a train back to Chicago, so I will leave my card by the flyers if anyone has any questions or would like more information. And our website is easy to remember, it's economicprogress.org. So, thank you for your time, and we hope that some of you might think about volunteering or extending the opportunity to any networks you might be a part of. Thanks.
Thank you, Alexander. Next, I just want to go over very quickly some of the events that we have coming up in Waukegan over the next week or two. Community event free to the public is Warrior Night. It's Friday, December 7th, from 6:00 to 9:00. It's going to be at Long Sing Restaurant, 2048 North Lewis, at the Genesee Theater. We have the Cake Boss on December 7th, Magic of the Nutcracker, both December 15th and 16th. Styx will be performing the 29th. Under the Street Lamp, December 30th, Emmylou Harris, January 11th. State Ballet Theater of Russia presents Cinderella, January 26th. Pajamales Live and Pajama Play Date, May 3rd, 2013. I'm not going to miss that one. I'm getting some new pajamas just for that event. We have the Breakfast with Frosty from the Friends of the Historic Genesee Theater, December 8th, on Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and that is being held at the Genesee Theater, as well as Breakfast Buffet, Visit with Frosty, Party Favors, and Classic Holiday Short Films. Again, that's at $10 per person. We have Holiday Walk coming up, December 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. wider range of events, including the Polar Bear Express. Some of the local restaurants are involved, CLC Lakeshore, Breakfast with Frosty, as we mentioned. Again, that's always a lot of fun, plus we'll be lighting the Christmas tree. Santa Photos, 224 North Genesee Street, $10 donation. This is being put on by wags, Waukegan animals getting saved, and that is from 12 to 4 o'clock. By the way, it says people welcome, also not just pets. The Early Learning Center Exhibit Opening Party, December 9th, from 1:00 to 3:00, at the Waukegan Public Library. It's called Let's Have Fun on the Farm. Should be fun for the kids. With a little help from my friends, an artistic tribute to the Beatles, Saturday, December 15th, 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. over at the Lakesurf Designs, 118 South Genesee. The Do-It-Yourself Messiah being presented by the Waukegan Park District, featuring the Waukegan Symphony Orchestra and Concert Chorus, Saturday, December 15th, at 7:00 p.m. at the First United Methodist Church, 128 Martin Luther King Drive here in Waukegan, and it's a $15 general admission. And last is the, again, we had the presentation from the Tax Site Volunteer Opportunities from the Center for Economic Progress. The information was given out. Again, it's at the Father Graff Center, 510 10th Street, and the information as presented is online for wwweconomicprogress.org. If you want to volunteer, it's the same email address or website address slash volunteer. We also, tonight, wanted to just kind of update everybody about the website work that's going on to redo the city of Waukegan website, and I've got a few things I want to present to you, and then I think Edie has some comments as well. First of all, the website contractor is Civic Plus from Manhattan, Kansas. This company is an expert in the field, has designed thousands of municipal websites. It will be fully ADA compliant. It will modernize our web presence, will help provide our services to our residents in a much more customer-friendly way. Will serve as one of our primary marketing tools for economic development, help facilitate a new branding effort for the community. We've assembled two teams of staff to work on the project. There's an executive committee that includes Alderman Newsome, and a working group made up of 15 staff from every department. We are meeting on the second, I'm sorry, we are on the second month of planning and are currently working on the design phase. The initial design will be reviewed by the executive team next week. Next step, we'll be generating, is this yours, Edie? Am I reading your comments? I don't think so. Okay. If I did, I apologize for stepping on your toes. Next step, we'll be generating content for pages. On-site consultations by Civic Plus staff will take place in early January. Alderman will be asked to participate in this process in order to help ensure fresh content. We're working towards a goal of completion by the end of April. To this end, we have taken a few steps on our own to lead us to this goal. Our new web address will be www.waukeganil.gov, and this address is currently active. Employee email addresses, we'll also be transitioning to a new format that will incorporate our new web address, the example being r.sabanjan@waukeganil.gov. However, the old email address format will work indefinitely. Edie?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I participated in an executive committee meeting last week, conducted by the design team, and this was a virtual meeting, which took place in the mayor's conference room with the design team in their offices in Kansas. We discussed the menu selection topics. We reviewed color schemes and design themes. We identified the use of key promotional photos, which Dave had sent in to the company. We viewed best practices of other municipal sites. We prepared a rough layout of our site, incorporating the best practices we learned from other governmental sites, and we're looking forward to seeing those results sometime this week. Our responsibility as a committee is to ensure that the new site is modern and customer-friendly. We want to ensure that we provide fresh content that the customer wants and needs in an intuitive way. We're also working to ensure that each department has an autonomy and is responsible for their own pages. Each department has a design, has a, each department has a designated web person, staff responsible for maintaining the pages. This can be done on a 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Business forms and applications will be online, where you can pay your bills online any time of the day or night. We know that this is a big undertaking, but we want to ensure that this modernization will be key to helping our departments do their job more efficiently and provide them with the tools to do so. So we'll be meeting next week, I believe tomorrow, that they're supposed to be giving us a layout. And we did look at some other webpages from other community, governmental communities. One in particular that we liked was out of McKinney, Texas. So we'll be drawing from some of the other websites that will make it customer-friendly for the people in Waukegan to do their business online. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Edie. Appreciate your involvement in it. Next, we want to mention and thank Fest for the work that they did to help light the garden on Genesee Street, the Madalafuqua Garden. It looks great. We're going to pass these along, so the aldermen get a chance to see it, and then after the meeting, if you want to come up and take a look at, or just drive down from here and take a look at what they've done, it's, it looks good. Very nice Christmas season decoration, so we want to make sure and send our thanks out to them. The other issue is that we need to select a city sticker tonight. What I'd like to do is I'm going to pass the options down to, starting with Alderman Rivera, and then if you would just initial the page as it goes past as to which one that you prefer, and we'll see which one gets the most votes. I think that these were all handed out a couple weeks ago, if I remember correctly, but I'm going to just start with my vote. Okay, if you would hand these down to Ralph then, thank you. And that will conclude the mayor's comments for this evening. I'd like to go to the audience time, and just remind everybody that we are holding to the three-minute limit on comments. First up is Mr. John Fossberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman. My name is John Fossberg. I live at 1570 Rudd Court in the 9th Ward. I'm, to address the conversation and things I've read in the newspaper about an increase in real estate tax levy for the city of Waukegan. First of all, before I get too far with that, I'd like to commend the aldermen and the mayor for the job you've done in recent years of reducing the expenditures, trying to get the city into some kind of balance with the income. I think you've done a great job in that effort, and I'd like to see you continue like that. Now, considering an increase in the real estate levy, I, right off the bat, I will tell you, I don't think you should have one. And I believe that the city, right now, the percentage of the income for the city has increased substantially, so that more of the burden is, I know the burden has remained the same, but the percentage has increased of how much of the income comes from real estate taxes. And I think that's out of balance. I understand that sales tax income is down, other miscellaneous incomes are down for the city, so it makes it difficult to keep it, what we would call in balance or in line with what it's been before. But I don't think the approach to solve that problem is by increasing the taxes. You have hired more people and made commitments for other expenditures before you've gotten the commitment for more money. I think that's out of line. Now, I'll go to a situation about just my real estate taxes. The fair cash value of my house, as estimated by the assessor, has decreased by about 30%. But I have never had a tax bill as large, or paid a tax bill as large, as the last tax bill that was issued, based on that assessment. So now, if the levies continue to increase, my tax bill will grow, but I think all of you ought to think about what's going to happen to not just my tax bill, but all of your tax bills and the tax bills for the other citizens of the city. When the evaluations do start to increase again, which sooner or later they will, are the people up here prepared, or, and also the other government entities that have line items on every tax bill, you people all see your own tax bills, see where the line items are, will those people be prepared to reduce the levies, to keep things in line, because the assessed evaluations of property are going up? I find that hard to believe. I think the better thing to do is not increase them now, try to keep the spending in line as you have, so that you can increase the spending when the assessments pick up, when the real estate, when the sales taxes pick up, those events take place. So, I think that those are logical reasons for not increasing the levy at this time. I commend you people again for what you've done, to try to keep your spending in line with your income, and I very much would hope that you would continue in that effort instead of raising the taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mayor, buddy?
No, we can't do that right now.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you, John. Next is Mr. Brendan Alvianni.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman, for this opportunity, 6th Ward. I'm a board member for Waukegan Main Street and the lead coordinator for the Holiday Walk that's going to be happening this Saturday, and I think you did a pretty good job of talking up, so I appreciate that. A few other things I wanted to highlight is, this year, we're going to have the first time ever, we're going to have a Christmas tree vendor downtown at the Water in Genesee, in the empty lot right there. And another big highlight is we're going to, we've partnered with Waukegan Schools, Glen Flora Elementary School, to have their big winter sing performance at the Genesee Theater. So that's going to be at 1:00, and that's going to bring, we estimate, this is the first time we've done it this way, between 1,000 and 1,400 people downtown, and they're all going to be leaving during the event, and hopefully visiting our other downtown We've highlighted all of this, everything. If you have any questions about the program itself, we do have a website, holidaywalk.com, as well as an active Facebook presence. Did want to thank Public Works and Tom Haggerty for helping hang the wreaths, and we also have a lot of volunteers who helped decorate downtown. Those decorations will be coming down in January, so we do, you know, I think they look nice, but we do understand we're going to be taking those down. If anyone would like a flyer or anything else, I do have a bunch, and I encourage you to bring them to your, to your workplace, or any place public that will let them, so with that, thank you.
Thanks, Brendan. Appreciate all the work that you, Main Street, and all the volunteers are doing to put this together. Okay, that concludes audience time. Now, we have the minutes before us. I'd like to take a motion from Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Tempest, to approve the minutes of November 19th, 2012, the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. We have, let's see, no resolutions, proclamations, presentations. Next, we go to committee reports and motions. First up is Alderman May and the Judiciary Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a little brief something to say. The first two items on the judiciary agenda pertain to an application submitted by the Waukegan Park District for vacations of parts of Cornell Avenue and Highland Avenue in the 8th Ward. The portion of the roads to be vacated are adjacent to the land that was recently donated to the Park District and will continue to be utilized for public purpose. The roads are unimproved, and while the Park District does not have imminent plans to develop this land, the roads will provide access to Park District maintenance vehicles, as well as public pedestrian and bicycle traffic. The Park District has already invested more than $12,000 for natural resource inventory and site assessment, Phase 1 environmental assessment, and engineering services for title survey and platification. There is no cost to the city to partner in this endeavor to preserve natural resources and eventually create a public park to serve our residents. The burden of any drainage issues related to the floodplains will be transferred to the Park District, and they are well-suited to maintain this property. There has been much discussion surrounding this There has been much discussion surrounding this issue as to whether or not the city would charge the Park District for said right-of-ways. The staff recommendation, as well as the majority committee recommendation, is not to charge the Park District for this property. The taxpayers currently own this land as the city of Waukegan, and the taxpayers will continue to own this land as the Waukegan Park District. The land will continue to be used for public purpose. It has never collected tax revenue, and there are no plans for this land to be improved as a true roadway. There are sufficient roadways in the, in place to serve the residents of this area. One resident who owns property on Beach Road and adjacent to Cornell Avenue expressed interest in acquiring half of Cornell Avenue right of way that is, abuts his property. The parcel will add 4,800 square feet to his land, resulting in an additional 30-foot frontage, 30 feet of frontage to his property on Beach Road. Based on the valuation of 26 cents per square foot for unimproved property on Cornell, staff recommends assessing a fee of $1,248 to the resident for this portion of the right-of-way. This additional land will add value to the private property of this residence and thus result in personal gain. This condition is part of the first motion relating to zoning calendar number V-1-12. And with that, I will make my first motion. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the vacation of Cornell Road from Beach Road to Howard Avenue in ordinance with conditions outlined by staff, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Valco. Do we have any comments or questions? Alderman Tempest?
Yes, I have quite a few comments. If I may. Number one, the Park District is entirely different taxing body than the city of Waukegan. They're very well-equipped to handle any minor costs involved. We have no complete plan of exactly how this land will be used. They want us to vacate the streets without dedicating a plan, completion time when it possibly be done. So there's no need to really hurry and vacate this land. Furthermore, Mr. Wendricks, in committee, he's thought that, why should he pay and not the Park District? A good point. And committee, I asked, why don't you just split the $1,200, $600 here, $600 there, and let it go then? And then you wanna vacate a whole, a whole street to the Willowbrook Condomation Homeowners' Association for free? I don't know if they want it. I don't know what plans you're gonna do with that, if that would be better off staying with the Park District and be part of the wetlands. That hasn't been discussed in committee. I see no reason to hurry up and go forward with this. The Park District has lots of money, lots of money. Their staff is well-paid. For $600, they could surely come up with that in salaries alone. Much more than our mayor makes, director of parks, much more. He has contracts that continue on and on. All he has to do is keep track of a few board members. They have six-year terms. And I think it's, it's not right that they don't pay their way when they can. We operate in parks, wonderful. They do a good job operating our parks, no doubt about that. My only criticism, we take beautiful parks and we put buildings up on them, instead of knocking down some old buildings and put the park buildings there, instead of taking our good Hinston Park and putting big buildings up there, instead of, we could've left it like a beautiful park without the buildings and put the buildings in a commercial area and knock down some blighted areas and put the building there and preserve your beautiful green space. That's my criticism, but they do a good job running the buildings. I, I can't get out, I just want some money from them. We talk about economics tonight, Mr. Fossberg, this is a different, a different entity of government. We ought to collect when we should collect. We can't keep giving things away. If we give it away to the Park District, I guess we should give it away to Hendricks, too. And what would you do if Hendricks said, "Well, I don't want it"? What are you gonna do with that little piece of land? What are you gonna do with it? What are you gonna do with the condo? Do we have an agreement with the condo association that they want that block? I haven't seen an agreement. And I haven't seen an agreement with the Park District with a timetable of what they're gonna do with this land. So at this point, Your Honor, I would like to hold this matter over until we get some more commitments from the Park District of what they're gonna do with this land.
Greg, do you want to speak to anything that was just said?
You know, with regard to the, the future plan, we told the Judiciary Committee, "No, we're sorry, sir." No.
Greg Petrie, Waukegan Park District, 2000 Belvedere Street, Waukegan, Illinois. We, we've spoken to Judiciary Committee. That land is just gonna be, it's, it's, one-third of it is wet, wetland and floodplain. There really isn't any access. It's landlocked. There are no plans. Right now, it's just to preserve the property. I couldn't come back with a plan because we don't have any plans, and we're not gonna invest any money in it right now. The only thing I can equate it to, as I, as I did it to Judiciary Committee, you know, if the, if the Hinkston family didn't give us Hinkston Park 100 years ago, would you have what you have now? If, if the Ben Diamond family didn't give us Ben Diamond Park about 80 years ago, would you have Ben Diamond Park on Sunset? If you look at, if you look at the, the News Sun editorial in Bonnybrook, when the Park District bought it during the Depression, the article says, "Why, why did the Park District buy such a piece of property that was so far out of town?" I mean, there's three examples of, you know, we're, we've got a donation, the Park District has put some money into it, we're asking the city to be a partner to just give us the, the right-of-ways to complete it, and, you know, the, the majority of the drainage problems are on the, the right-of-ways. If it's your preference, keep the right-of-ways, we'll take the property, you could deal with the problems, that's, that would be fine with us. It, it's up to you what you all wanna do. We respect whatever your wishes are. We'd like to have it, to make it a good public piece of property, but, you know, we respect what your, what your decision is.
Well, okay, thank you, Greg.
Your Honor, if I may counterpick what he said. He spent $12,000 already. Says he spent no money. He's already spent $12,000, admitted that in committee. Also, he said there's no right-of-way. You do have right-of-way in your property, right next to, right next to Wendricks' property, so there is right-of-way property.
No, we don't have anything. You haven't given us anything, Larry.
You have that right-of-way, right off Cornell, that little strip of land going straight up in there. I got the map.
Only if you give it to us.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
And in committee, it ought to be brought out that we're, I was willing to compromise, instead of Mr. Wendricks just have to pay, instead of $1,200, you wanted to stick it just for $600, so you each paid $600, gave the city something for our staff and time, but you didn't wanna give even $600. You wanted, in your stubborn mind, to win.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman May.
This, the argument is not between, there's no contention between Mr. Wendricks and the Park District. There's a road that comes off Beach, Beach Road. Mr. Wendricks is gonna take half of it, 'cause it's next to his property. The other half will provide access for the Park District to the greater piece of land. Mr. Wendricks is a private residence and will have personal gain. $1,200 is not a lot to ask for 30-foot of frontage, a 30, the whole 160 feet of his land, 30-foot frontage, 26 cents a square foot. And I disagree. The Park District is a public entity. We pay, our citizens, our residents, pay tax dollars to the Waukegan Park District. They pay tax dollars to us. Why are we asking them to, to pay through their tax, pay, Park District tax dollars for land that we already own, that they already own? We've turned around, we sat in Judiciary Committee last month and didn't even blink at giving right-of-way to the school district for the alley. We didn't even blink.
I blinked.
Yes, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, Mayor. A year and a half ago, when we had that 100-year reign, we had the four inches and 45 minutes, that Beach Road corridor, including that area there, was underwater. If the Park District is willing to take that on at their expense, I see no reason why we should hesitate, because it's a big expense believing it was terrible out there. Well, you were up there.
I was there.
It was terrible out there. I, I see no reason to hold this over.
Would you, there's, there's only one way that this can be dealt with. Either the, the request to hold over stands, or someone has to make a motion to override.
If we...
Or we could respectfully request the Alderman withdraw...
Your Honor?
...the, his hold.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
It's so easy to solve tonight. It's called $600. Mr. Wendricks be glad to pay it. Park District Superintendent should be glad to pay it. It's gonna cost him more than that in the long run. The city, we cannot continue to give away money. I told this council before, you had a little piggy bank, a little money here, a little money here. I'm not trying to pick on anybody, just like you, $8,000 a month for a consultant in Springfield. Absolutely crazy. And yet, we wanna raise taxes. Park District got a tremendous raise years ago with, with Bob Morrison and John Bellavelli, tremendous raise. I'm not, I think it should be held over and try to negotiate the $600 and come up the next meeting and at least try to negotiate something with, with some, the developer that was giving the property away for a good tax write-off. I think it could be worked out, I really do, if it gives time.
Yes, Alderman May.
With all due respect, Alderman Tempest, this has been in committee for three months.
And it came out a few months and went back.
I'm sorry, I, I believe it's my turn.
But I, I gotta correct you.
Alderman Tempest, please, point of order, sir.
Sure.
Why in the world would the Park District pay for half of Mr. Wendricks' acquired piece of property?
It's not...
No, 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 no.
No, we're...
No, no, no.
Please, please. Alderman Tempest, please, point of order, sir.
She's asking a question.
Please.
The 12, I'm asking a hypothetical question. It's a $1,248 assessed to the strip of land that we are offering to Mr. Wendricks. You are suggesting that the Park District pays for half of that, which in essence is paying for half of Mr. Wendricks' bill. Mr. Wendricks is getting personal capital gain. This is, this, and this whole issue is not, it doesn't have to do with the private residence. It's about, let's hand over these right-of-ways. Why would we hold it over? We've already been told by the Park District, the board has directed the Park District that they will not pay for this land. I think you know where you stand. Let's vote. You're not gonna change your mind.
If I may answer those questions, no.
Yes, please, Alderman Tempest. Yes, sir.
I thought she was asking me a question directly, and I'm glad to answer that. The amount of vacations of streets that the Park Board's getting compared to Mr. Wendricks is quite a difference in, in the number of, quite a large amount. So try to even things up a little bit and get still, give the Park District a good deal for $600 compared to the amount of streets they're getting vacated. And what about giving this other to this homeowners association? Do they want it? Do they want the, do they want it? Or should that stay with the Park District? Has that been cleared up yet? I don't believe it has. So let's hold it over.
Mr. Sabrin addressed that.
Alderman May, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Sabrin did address that at council, and they have spoken with Willowbrook, and they are willing to take on the property.
See, I'm a gentleman, I let you speak.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I, I think it could be straightened out. At least we get the answers. Homeowners Association, do they really want? Are they not gonna pay anything either? That's a homeowners, that's a homeowners station. Why shouldn't they pay for that land then? 'Cause the other group don't want it? I would ask that we sit down and try and get this straightened out. Two more weeks is not gonna kill ya, is not gonna kill ya. I make my point. I ask the other fellow aldermen to please let it stay for two more weeks. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other comments or questions?
I, I'm gonna make a motion with all due respect to Alderman Tempest. I know that they don't, they don't like this up here, but I'm gonna make a motion to override the holdover. It's been in committee for three months. We talk about it every month at Judiciary. For, Judiciary Committee has been dragging on and on and on over this item. So with all due respect, Alderman Tempest, I don't believe you're gonna change your vote. I don't think we're gonna come up with any different deal in two weeks, or four weeks, or six weeks. The Park District was very clear.
Okay, we have the motion by Alderman May. Do we have a second by Alderman Valco to override Alderman Tempest's request to hold over under Judiciary Committee, item A. Let's have a roll call on that, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conken.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
No.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
And I wanna thank my members very much, and I'm really disappointed.
We haven't, have we concluded the vote? No, we haven't concluded the vote yet.
Alderman May.
Yes.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right, we will go on to the next item that will be returned back in two weeks.
The next item is related to the same topic, Mayor, so I don't know if we just wanna skip over it. It's zoning calendar V-212. It's the same issue. So we'll just hold over number two as well? So next item, number three. This next item pertains to cleaning up the language in our current zoning ordinance, which could be interpreted to allow large-scale residential rehabilitation centers, such as correctional facilities, in certain zoning districts. This does not pertain to existing halfway houses and will not negate CUPs already operating in the city. This change will not affect Oxford home-type facilities or group homes that are covered by the Federal Fair Housing Act. And with that, this Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the tax amendment and ordinance eliminating the use residential rehabilitation centers as a conditional use in the R5, R6, R7, R8, and OI-1 zoning districts, and also remove the definition of the term. And I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Do we have any comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Tempest.
I wonder if Ann Lynn could give us a, what this actually really means, so everybody understands very clearly.
I'd be happy to. The, this arises from an old lawsuit that was filed against the city of Waukegan going back to 1994, which resulted, the city lost this case going up to the appellate court and resulted in a halfway house installation in the city, which is still there. Subsequent to that, and it was as a result of this term, residential rehabilitation facilities in our zoning code. Subsequently, skip forward to 2012, we've had some requests, I think really just testing the waters, for the possibility of establishing large-scale, 200 to 300-bed halfway house-type facilities for early releases from the Department of Corrections. And the request was to have such a facility possibly locate in the downtown district. The downtown district is made up of quite a few different zoning districts, including our 4, our 5, our 8, and OI-1. And this term is included in all those different districts that the ordinance includes that's presented to you. So in order to, to address that request, which was not made formally, it was just a phone call, but suggesting this is something that some developers might be looking at in the future, the staff realized that we never did address it back in 1994 with that lawsuit, and so that's the reason for it now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. We have the motion and the second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Next item is zoning calendar number 2376. This item reclaims, pertains to application for a conditional use permit for a landscape contractor shopping yard. This business is relocating from Highland Park to Waukegan, calls for aesthetic improvements to the property, and the use is similar to existing businesses on the corridor. And with that, the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the conditional use permit and ordinance for the proposed landscape contractor shopping yard at 924-926 South Green Bay Road, with conditions outlined by staff, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Do we have any comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Newsome.
I got a question. Reading this, is there a empty house on this property, vacant home? I thought I read on it...
Some kind of a structure on there.
Are they gonna use that?
Nick, would you like to address this for us, please?
It's a vacant, single-family residence?
Well, it's not vacant.
Oh, it's not vacant? Oh, it says, says it's vacant on our paperwork.
Nick, could you please come to the microphone, please, so that you could, okay, thank you.
This is the 924, 926.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
See, this is a landscaping business, sir. No. Next door. This is next door. Next door. Next one. Next one. Sometimes I have issues with the house owners.
There is a house on, one of the, it's two parcels, 924 and 926. 924 does have a house on, and it's occupied, and it's been in this family for years.
The same?
Same family.
The same family? Oh, okay.
And, you know, it was a, it was a house, you know, back 50 years ago, or 60 years ago, and now it's Zone B3 in the city.
So will, you said this is owned by the same family, the same family that wants to buy this property?
No, no, no.
Okay, so when they vacate this house, you say it's someone living there, on our paperwork it says it's vacant.
There will be a caretaker on the property.
So will they be utilizing this home?
Yes.
Will they tear it down?
Yes. No, no, they'll be utilizing the building.
Okay, as a home?
As a caretaker's office and, and office.
Oh, okay.
They're gonna, yeah, they're gonna own.
All right.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you.
Next item is zoning calendar number 2377, and this is for a conditional use permit for a proposed nightclub. Although we did vote to place a moratorium on the nightclub, CUPs, this application was presented before we passed that moratorium. The nightclub use permit has been available, I believe, since 2006, so it's not something special or new that we came up with for this particular applicant. They have experience in the business, they have sufficient security staff and parking acquired, and therefore, the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the conditional use permit and ordinance for the proposed nightclub at 454 North Green Bay Road with conditions outlined by staff, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Do we have any comments or questions? Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. My concern, I just wanted to make sure that promotions, you know, when they, was that issue brought up in their conditional use? You know, because a lot of these nightclubs, what they do is, you know, when they go out for these, you know, promoting an event or anything, they, they have outside second-hand people doing that, and that's what creates problems. So is that in the conditional use permit?
Ann, please come on. That's not allowed underneath the permit, under the permit.
Right.
Under the nightclub ordinance, which this application is still operating.
Ann, in the mic, please, could you?
Yes, that's right. Under the nightclub ordinance, third-party promotions are not allowed, and these applicants are very well aware of that. So they have to run their own promotions, they have to do everything themselves, and that's part of our existing nightclub ordinance, and like I said, their oper, their application came in under that ordinance.
Okay, how, how are we gonna monitor that?
Well, I mean, we do have to pay attention to what's going on there, and with the police department, we do do that on a really regular basis. Also, as a part of the proposed conditional use permit, there's a 90-day review period, so, which is really a good provision. So every 90 days, the Judiciary Committee will take a look again, staff will present what has happened in the last 90 days at this location, and make sure there haven't been any problems. So it's pretty much an automatic review.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Moiseo.
Is this different owners than the billiard shop? Or the same owners?
It's different.
Different, different.
Thank you, that's all.
Alderman Conkin.
That was my question, was that, isn't this, didn't we have trouble with this particular establishment beforehand? I mean, I know it's with the old owners.
Right.
This was a, this was one of the establishments that caused the problem, that caused the moratorium in the first place, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they were the, one of the late-night licenses that, they weren't actually a nightclub.
That's one, that's one of the reasons we've gone to this moratorium on nightclubs.
Were they a nightclub? Did they have that?
Yes, the former establishment, which went out of business, was a nightclub. They did have a nightclub CUP. We did have difficulties with them a few times, and we had them in the office, and we actually moved to revoke their conditional use permit and their liquor license. That was all resolved, and then ultimately, they did go out of business anyway. But it's completely different ownership now, and the applicants are not related to those former owners.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Rivera.
Now, when that, the old owners, when they, you know, went out of business, what happened to that license? Did that license, liquor license go back into the?
No, completely.
Into the list, or?
Yes, it completely separate. That establishment actually had a late liquor license. It, it did go back into the list. Since that time, the liquor license ordinance has been amended to remove that license. So they had a kind of a special license, to be honest. This applicant, and again, this, what's before you now is the application for a conditional use permit, completely separate from the liquor license, but they do have a liquor license, and they have just a regular liquor license. They do not have a late license.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be next.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
The next item is an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater, and this is the former fans, or the fans student site. The cleanup has been done, and now we're just going forward with the potable water ordinance. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply at the addresses so indicated, and the addresses are on Glenrock and Gladstone, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Comments or questions?
Yes.
Alderman Tempest.
I do a lot of commenting on it. It appears we, we're in a mold where we continue to do this. I know, I believe we have an ordinance that you can't have a well, I believe, for portable water. That means our groundwater is being contaminated, and fans do, I believe, is one of the reasons why we did this. They polluted our creek way back when, and we wonder why all the fish were dying in the Waukegan River. Trace it back to them. I feel we should protect our groundwater. I voted the other way many times, and I'll probably vote for this again because it went through all the committees and so forth. But I think, where are we gonna go somewhere if something happens to our lake water supply? We need portable water to be able to live. I mean, it seems to be an easy way out for a lot of these corporations to just say you can't have any portable water. Are they paying the city any fine for us, given this privilege? Are we getting anything out of it? Again, I'm looking for money. We make it easy for them by passing this law, but are they giving any equality back to the city in a way of economics or money? And I just wonder about that for the future, Mayor. If you could take my thoughts, you usually do, you can give me time anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. No other comments or questions? We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Weak eye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I have never heard a weak eye. Well, I'm full of surprises, I guess.
The next item is approval of release of easement for sanitary sewer line. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the release of easement for sanitary sewer line at the property so indicated. We do have the release of easement before us. It's a former OMC. I think the, the line doesn't even exist anymore, so we're releasing the easement for it, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
And our final item is an approval of a plat of easement for sanitary sewer line for where the sewer line potentially will be in the future. Or is it there already, Amy? It's already there. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the plat of easement for sanitary sewer line at the property so indicated, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Do we have any comments or questions on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next is Public Safety Committee Chairman Tom Conkin.
Thank you, Your Honor. We only had two items. The Public Safety Committee met tonight at 6:45. We had two very quick items, just information, only one from the fire department and one from the police department. Item A from the fire department, the fire alarm board information. The Waukegan Fire Department received a check in the amount of $106,663.48 from Contact Fire Alarm Company, the city's alarm board contractor, for the last quarter of the fire alarm contract. Chief, would you care to get up and let us know how this relates to what's going on? This is actually a win-win situation. We've gotten, gotten some more money, and the people that take advantage of the fire board, our alarm board system, have saved money. So Chief, if you would?
Approximately two years ago, we entered into a con, a contract with Contact to be our alarm board contractor. It's a five-year contract. The year prior to that, we, we took and collected more funds in the last quarter for the city than we did in the previous year of that contract. That, that is the contract where radio waves send the fire alarms to our board as well as the burglar alarms. About 95% of that is fire department, 5% is police department alarms. So this contract was a win-win situation, not only for the city, but for the business people that were paying $300, $400 a month for telephone lines. We were able to get rid of those, and they're paying $89 a month for that service. So within nine quarters, we, we've collected more in one quarter than we did in the previous year when we had the, the other contract.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item B was for the police department. The Waukegan Police Department received a forfeiture check in the amount of $5,897.83 from the Illinois State Police. And that's all I have, Your Honor. I believe that both checks have been signed and deposited, correct?
Okay.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the work that you do, and the committee does. Next, we have old business. Item A, we have adopt as presented an ordinance levying and assessing taxes of the city of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, for the 2012 tax levy year. Do we have a motion to approve?
Prove what?
Prove what?
Motion to approve the, we don't have any, anything here as far as when it was being held over from the last time. So it's being dealt with, looking for a motion.
It's a committee, it never got presented, Mayor. We've got three options here.
We have three options, so it would be, to adopt one of those options, I guess, if anyone is ready to adopt any option.
Yeah.
The district that was in committee, that's a town.
Yes, Alderman Valco?
Well, I'll be the bad guy. I'll start it off. And just those people that are at home understand this, and those of you in the audience that understand what's going on. I'll give you a little history here. Before I came on the board, two years ago, the mayor had asked for a 57% increase in the taxes. In the Waukegan portion, let's get that straight. The Waukegan portion of your tax bill is 17%, not 57% of the total bill. The consul at that time said, "No." Nothing was done. The mayor at that time said, "Conseil, please, we have to do something, otherwise, we're gonna lay off people." And true to its word, the consul did not go ahead with an increase, and subsequently, the city laid off approximately 45% to 50% of the workforce. Last year, this consul raised the taxes 4.9% under the 5% minimum. We've had a good year this year. There's been no problems. A lot of things have transpired. We've hired a few more people. This year, the mayor had asked for a 21% increase. I cannot go along with a 21% increase. It's way too high. Is it justified? Probably. Do we need it? Probably. But the people in this city cannot afford a 21% increase in the 17% of your tax bill. The last year, every person with, since the last increase of 4.9%, the people that I've talked to at the neighborhood meetings, face-to-face, on the phone, I've told them, it's going up this year. It's gonna go up more than the 4.9%. And the reason being is because we need policemen, we need firemen. It's gotta go up. I told them, what would be the average? I'm looking at probably between seven and eight percent. And everybody to a T said, "We can live with that." Not one person said, "It's way too much." Now, I'm sure the other Aldermen, myself, have been barraged by emails, especially from the Ninth Ward. Uh, people are going out and about, uh, and they're doing a fine job. They really are. They're, uh, they're asking the different governmental entities what they're gonna raise their taxes by. Majority of them are at three percent. They can't go above three percent because by law, they got a tax gap at three percent, so they can't do more than three percent. Let me tell you, Lake County First Office flush with money. They've got a triple-A rating, they've got a beaucoup money. Waukegan doesn't have a lot of money, alright? And so you also understand, the Finance Department has done a great job this year. What they've come up with is, with the Aldermen, is, let me backtrack here for a second, if I may. On your, part of your, in two thousand and four, in two thousand and four, your garbage was taken off your tax bill. I've asked a couple of people that were here at that time, nobody knows why. Nobody knows why at all. That reduced, at that time, it reduced your tax bill. Now, they put it on your water bill. We first had it, five dollars a quarter, you were paying on your water bill for your garbage pickup. A couple of years ago, we raised it to fifteen dollars a quarter. It turns out, the garbage is now five point seven million dollars for the city of Waukegan. Your fifteen dollars every three, every three, every three months is only seventeen percent of the total bill for the garbage. So, the biggest increase on your tax bill is gonna be for a pickup for the gar- the garbage, the five point nine million dollars, 'cause it wasn't there before. It was on your water bill and you were only paying seventeen percent of it. The city cannot afford to do this anymore, guys. It's very simple. We can't fund the homeowners in the city of Waukegan. We just can't do it anymore. Since I've been here, I'm, I'm a newbie. I've only been here for a year and a half, but this group of individuals up here has really tried hard. They've really tried hard. They've scrimped, they've cut, they've looked at different options, and there's, there's three options tonight that have been, are, that are gonna be presented, or that we're looking at, let me put it that way. A twenty-one percent that the mayor wishes, a ten percent alternative that's a good one, and I came up, as well with staff, for an eight percent increase. And I feel that the citizens of Waukegan, once you understand that the majority of that eight percent is gonna be for garbage, and we have to have it at almost six million dollars a year, I think the people can understand that. It's, it's, it's gonna have to go up. It really does. And I'm gonna take the lesser of the two evils. That's all I have to say, sir.
May I ask a question, your honor? May I ask?
Oh, yes, Alderman Tempest.
If, if I may, you don't have to answer if you don't want to, but with this seven and eight percent increase, which the lowest I've heard so far, that also includes that eventually, the garbage will go off the water bill, is that correct?
The garbage, with the eight percent, with the eight percent, the garbage will go off the water bill.
And basically, it'll be, everybody will somehow come off at the same time when their quarterly bill comes in. They'll all be paying the same, some won't pay, uh, for three, some for a year. Every quarter, we get our bill. I wanna, somehow, they're gonna make that to, everybody, everybody ends the same way, the same amount.
Everybody's gonna end the same way, 'cause I know there's several billing cycles, isn't that correct? But everybody at, at the end would...
The same cycle.
The same type, they would pay.
They'll pay the same amount of cycles, everybody.
Right. And, and what that eight percent will do, it's gonna fund, partially fund, the police pension, the fire pension, the garbage, uh, the corporate levy of two point seven million dollars will be eliminated. The IR, IMRF levy, which is gonna be new, will be structured to be fully funded by property taxes over a four-year period, with twenty-five percent the first year, fifty percent the second year, seventy, and so on. The library's gonna stay the same at their current levy amount. Uh, and what else? The overall result will be a total levy of thirty million, four hundred and ninety thousand and thirty-eight dollars, and it's a two point three million, or an eight percent increase over the prior year.
Alderman Tempest?
You know me by now. My question is, so I'm clear, I want everybody to be clear. You said the garbage costs us, again?
Five point seven.
Five point seven. Five point seven. So, and we have, we'll say roughly five percent, I gotta say four point now without any hearing or anything. So by putting the garbage back on the tax bill, how much more are we actually increasing the tax bill when it comes to the Senate? Did you give me that, or me that, or you give it?
Off of the twenty-one percent, I believe it was ten percent, and then off of the ten percent, it was a one percent, and I haven't calculated what it is off the eight percent. That's taking the garbage off the levy.
So our levy last year was how much, how many, how many million? Maybe Tina can help.
The aggregate?
Yeah. Tina? I think we need Tina.
Average was sixteen point six last year.
Okay. What are you asking?
Well, basically, we put the garbage on the water bill. How much did we levy last year in amount of dollars? How many dollars did we...
For garbage, zero.
No, not garbage, total.
Total tax.
Whole city. Twenty-three million.
For aggregate, including bond or without bond?
Everything.
Twenty-eight point two, I believe.
For comparison purposes, if we, the twenty, the twenty-one percent alternative, which includes the garbage, pays for the police and fire that were hired under a grant, police pension, fire pension, IMRF and all of that, um, you're looking at about a two hundred and forty dollar increase for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, okay? If we put the full cost of residential garbage on the water bill instead of fifteen dollars per quarter, it would be between eighty and ninety dollars per quarter. So even the twenty-one percent increase would be less expensive for the majority of homeowners than putting the full cost of garbage on their water bill, just for a matter of comparison.
Our total tax levy for dollars was about twenty-eight million last year.
Yes, mhm.
Okay, and, and that's without the garbage, 'cause technically, we did that the other way. Now we put the garbage contract, and I heard it's about five point seven million.
Yes.
So you add five point seven million, it'd be about thirty-two point seven, roughly.
Right.
Okay. And we're proposing...
Other than bonds, that would be the highest, that would be the highest piece of the tax levy. It, it's even higher than the, um, police pension.
Could I ask this question? If I may, your honor. I know our tax rates pretty well, you know? Under your dad, we're ninety-nine cents, wow, eight percent utility tax. For a while, we're a dollar forty-two, dollar ninety-eight, over two dollars now. But my point is, I live in my home. I'm not moving, I'm here. My total tax bill will not par- uh, we tax dollars.
Correct.
We still have tax rates. So as their tax rate freezes and the valuation goes down, by us maybe raising it eight percent, the tax bill could stabilize and pay about the same amount of dollars they paid the last year, even though the Waukegan portion would go up a little.
Theoretically, if values decline because of the tax rate limitations that are in place for all non-home rule entities, which is the park district, the school district, et cetera, mathematically, if your valuation goes down, it forces down the dollars that those non-home rules can collect. So even if we raise our rate, our tax levy, tax bills could potentially go down because valuations continue to go down, but everybody's different.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Alderman. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Cunningham?
I was gonna piggyback on what Alderman Tempest...
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Moizio.
That's, uh, I, I said this when we had the hearing, try to explain this to people that we're talking to. The tax rate is the same for everybody. Your, your taxes went down, mine stayed the same, and yours went up, it was because of the value of your house. How, how much did your value of your house go up or down? If your value of your house went up, which I said, I don't know of anybody's property that's going up, then your tax, your tax, excuse me, your tax bill will then go up. If your value of your house goes down, 'cause the tax rate is consistent for everybody, then you're probably gonna pay those taxes. It depends on where you live in Waukegan, on whether or not your tax bill will go up, because we set a rate for everybody that lives in the city of Waukegan. So depending on the valuation of your house, that's how, whether or not you pay, stay or, or go down. And that's the way I try to explain it to people. Some people say, "Well, my taxes went up, mine went down, mine stayed the same." Well, it depends on the value of your home. If you're in an area where it went down, it's, your taxes are gonna go down. If you're in an area where it stayed the same, it's probably gonna go up. Am I correct on that, Tina?
I'm sorry. Please, please, no, please don't.
Yeah, the taxes are based on two things, valuation and tax dollars levied, and that, that's what equals your rate. The city of Waukegan, like all home rules, we tax levy a dollar amount. The rate is backed into by the county. Non-home rules are capped at a tax rate. So as valuations decline, this is why school districts and park districts are having problems, because as valuations decline, even if their rate stays the same, they cannot collect the same amount of dollars as they previously did. Municipalities do not have that kind of legislation. And just to be fair, for, because we've heard some apples-to-oranges comparisons with surrounding communities, most other communities in the northeastern Lake County area do not pay for garbage out of their budgets, but instead residents are billed directly for garbage pickup. They also pay higher water rates than the city of Waukegan businesses and residents. So to be fair and equitable, those other things should be looked at when we're looking at how expensive it is to live in the city of Waukegan. While our tax rate might be higher than other municipalities, residents also don't pay directly to garbage companies for garbage pickup, and they pay lower water rates to the city of Waukegan than they do in other municipalities as well.
Good boy. Thank you. Okay, Alderman Cunningham.
I'd like to get back to Alderman Valco's position on it, and I think you did an excellent job of kinda explaining some things. Uh, one of them, uh, to the credit of Finance Committee and Tina and her staff, it looks like we're able to clean up some things of how we are gonna be paying for these. I just wanna make sure I can go down these, this little list, uh, Tina. Uh, right now, the corporate tax levy used to be used as a means of paying all of our, uh, kind of all of our bills. Uh, what you've then essentially done is says, "You know what? Let's itemize this." Itemize in a way where everybody know on their tax bill what these dollars are being used for. I thought that was very, very, very good, uh, particularly for, you know, for myself as we're explaining to people. You know, when they see a corporate tax levy of five million, three million, twenty million, they get like, "Wow, the city has a lot of money to do things with." With your new assessment, uh, I shouldn't say assessment, your new itemized way of showing this on the tax bill, it's gonna show exactly garbage, police pension, fire pension. I think up in there was another item you included in there, um, and I, it escaped...
IMRF.
IMRF, no.
Another category in library.
IMRF simply means the retirement funds for non-police and fire, uh, municipal employees. So with that being said, we kinda know exactly what our cost is. Um, and we've, under one of the theories, we've eliminated the corporate tax levy, uh, which is a huge dollar amount which was used to pay all of these things. I, uh, as I said earlier, and I think in, in our committee of the whole, believe that we should have some excess funds, uh, we call it a rainy day fund, you know, within our, with this environment. To Alderman Valco's credit, I think that eight, or ten percent, whatever that number may be, that is a very, very conservative way of looking at our, our finances, trying to keep them at a, a point where not only can we continue to do business efficiently and effectively within our city government, but at the same time, kinda bringing, keeping those costs at a minimum. And also, and I'm hoping that's, this is in there, if I'm thinking like you, Tina, foreseeing some unfortunate situation that can happen, uh, within city government within a year. So I think this, I think you did, you, the Finance Department did an excellent job of making sure this is, uh, easy, I call it, to do business with. Easy to explain when we're talking to residents as to why we made the decisions that we made, with, whatever it may be at this point. But one of the criticisms we, I, I think we got last time, particularly with the harsh, the, the layoffs that we took, was, "I didn't see a reason, Alderman, that we shouldn't have went up in order to have police safety, to have, to have fire safety, to have the necessary personnel and various division of government to make the city continue to run efficiently and effectively." I think we've been able to balance those two from our learnings in the past, and make some good solid decisions for right now. Um, I, I personally am leaning toward that, that eight percent number, if not more, or that nine percent number, to make sure that we have funds that are available, any event, there are unforeseen things within our operations. Because if we don't, that means we'll have to take away from, help me if I'm right, Tina, once they're budgeted, if we need to demolish something, if we need to act, to acquire things in order for whatever our goals and objective is for our downtown, lakefront, other parts of the city, that means we have to take dollars from those budgeted items in order to handle that particular responsibility. Yea or nay?
That's correct, sir.
With some of the things that we're trying to plan right now, I think it's important, very important, that we have those funds available, whether the rest of the council agrees with me now, that is just my personal opinion. Because we have been operating with that, "Don't spend, don't spend, don't spend," has that somewhat hurt us? I think it is a lot, it's not, it has not allowed us to do the things we need to do with a growing city, understanding these are the costs associated with a growing city. So that's my opinion, and, uh, you know, I just look for the rest of the council and their opinion as to what we do either today, I don't know if we're gonna do it today or in a couple of weeks, but that's where I'm leaning to because of those reasons. And again, I thank you and, and the Chair, the Chairwoman, for really laying this out for us, so we can better communicate this to the resident of this community as to what it takes to run this operation. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman May?
I'd like to make a comment. I think one of the difficult things with this discussion or for the public is that it's the, it's, why do we have the, if, if we're keeping staff and services the same, why do we have to raise the levy? And the unseen is that we're stealing from our water fund to run the city. We don't, we haven't been maintaining a rainy day fund for years because we're using every penny we can to run the city. Um, and to Alderman Cunningham's point, there is issues. We don't have enough, I mean, besides fire and police, which we all, most of us agree that we need, which is, I think, we're subsidizing or we're putting up about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to supplement the grants that we've accepted, and that was where we extended to hire more people, knowing that we were gonna have to cover it this year. But the unknown is that we're always pulling out of the water fund to subsidize, and we have a water plant that is, you know, needs to be addressed. It's, it's aging, the infrastructure's breaking down, there are things that we're letting go by the wayside as we sit in this holding pattern. And the same thing, like I think about code. I mean, yes, we need fire and police, but we have code officers that, that department's so small, if we can't keep code up, how do we, um, raise up the image of our city to get more people to move here and invest and bring businesses here? We don't have money to, we don't even have an economic development department in a city of a hundred thousand, so how are we gonna encourage economic development in the city when we have no money to put towards that? I mean, it's the whole, you, sometimes you have to spend money to make money, and we aren't even proposing to do that. We're just trying to get on some level ground here and quit stealing from Peter to pay Paul. So I mean, it is a huge, terrible, I don't want my taxes to go up either, you know, we struggle. I, it's, it's really hard decisions, but at the same time, we have to make some decisions for our future, and we have to have a rainy day fund, and we gotta quit stealing from the water fund. And I think that's, you know, why there's gonna be some raise in the tax levy, in my mind. What number we're gonna land on, I don't, I don't know that we're in agreement tonight or not, but I just think the public needs to know some of these things that are happening that, you, you know, if services and, we're not, we're not adding anything, why do we have to get more money? 'Cause we have to keep, we have to quit stealing from our reserves. It's like cashing in your 401K and, we just can't do it anymore. So, those are my comments.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Conken?
Uh, one thing I'd like to mention, uh, about this tax levy and us putting the trash back onto the tax bill, uh, right now, you're paying sixty dollars a year, fifteen dollars a quarter for water, or for trash that's put on your water bill. At this point, that money is non-tax deductible, but it would be a tax write-off if it were to appear, as it will in the future, uh, regardless of what we, the tax, trash is going back on the tax bill. So that will be a, that is one advantage for the, for the residents, in one case is now a tax write-off. Uh, it's also an advantage to the city because we're gonna get that money in, uh, property taxes for the trash collection, and that way, uh, somebody that doesn't pay the water bill, doesn't pay the trash bill either. This way, we get the trash money upfront, and it helps everybody by decreasing that volume, or the money that we would need in, uh, it would already be in the city coffers. So, that's just an advantage both for the city and for the residents of the city, I believe, so, so I want, something I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Bedling?
Do you have any idea what we're gonna spend on street repaving next year? Tom?
Where are we at, Tom? We have some motor fuel that we can rely on every year, but...
There's a, there's a little bit of motor fuel tax, and that's, that's it. Typically, we need, for, for town on our side, we need to spend four point six million dollars a year to keep our roads in, except for the lot.
And we haven't mentioned the wa- our water delivery system either, right? There's hundreds of patches, literally?
It's, um, based on an average size, you know, an average, one point three million dollars per mile, um, and then a hundred year lifespan, which is a little bit long, but if you use a hundred year lifespan, you should replace it with three point, three point three miles a year, um, which is a little four million dollars, uh, four million dollars a year.
Those are the questions. That, that concerns me, Jenkinson and Monroe. In my ward, between Buttrick and Dorchester, are buckled concrete streets that need to be broken out, right? Can't really, can you repave over those?
I'd have to take another look at them.
It's a rough ride over there. That, those people have lived with those streets for decades. Way too long. The rest of our streets are crumbling. We're not in bad a shape as North Chicago yet. Well, I mean, when are we gonna address these issues? Been a lot of fun around here for the last fifteen years, spending a lot of money. It seems like we deferred our infrastructure. We need some more people in the building department. I wish somebody could go around and, uh, I, I go down the streets every day, or on garbage day, and, and take note of the addresses where the garbage canlet is open. There's several bags of garbage piled up above it. It looks like crap. You know, there's too many people living in those homes, apparently, or they just don't know how to pack their garbage. These are quality of life issues that we need to address, and if we don't have enough personnel to attend to these things, doesn't make for a very pretty town. Litter line all over the place. I don't think people know when leaf pickup happens. Don't put notices in the, in the water bill or something, I don't know, landlords, you know? The little things we need to concentrate on here, and our roads cost money. We're getting behind. Where are we gonna get the money for that? What is the police inf... What is the police and fire pension currently funded at? 45 and 50%? I don't know. That's reality to me. I'm not here to make friends with anybody. That's just the truth. Got to come up with the money somewhere. I wish we, I suggested last June that if we could have a community forum to explain to the public what our costs are, what we need to do to get caught up on things, but unfortunately, that didn't happen. Maybe next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rivera.
I've had the opportunity to listen every, to everyone's comment in the last couple of years, you know, so the people know, you know, we've done everything that was needed to be done to bring our deficit down. And as John Fosborg mentioned early in the evening, you know, we've done a pretty good job. You know, we've asked all our department heads to cut back, cut back on overtime, cut back on expenses. We've laid off, we did furloughs. You know, we've done everything we could to, to bring that deficit down, and at the same time, you know, to still maintain the finances of the city, so the city can still work. But it has hurt us, no question about it, especially in, in code, as Alderman May mentioned. You know, we've lost a lot of money there. A lot of money. People are operating, you know, doing things without permits, you know, because they can get away with it. We don't have the manpower to, to be checking on these things. We've gone the other, we've gone also in raising permits and raising the water. You know, we can't continue to nickel and dime people to death, and that's what, what we've been doing the last couple of years. But yes, I could see us, we need to start thinking, how can we make more money, more revenue on sales tax? Developments, you know, these things, they add revenue to the city. That's what we need to start concentrating on. But the three options that they're talking, 21%, 10%, 21%, it's what, $240 increase on $150,000 home? You figure half of that, that's what, 140 increase on $150,000 home? At 10%?
115.
Am I, am I correct on that? More or less?
115.
115? So you'd figure at 8%, you'd figure what would that go down to, Tina? Like 80, 85?
I don't know exactly. I didn't realize.
You know, 90 for the year? So now you're talking, you know, especially in my ward where there's, you know, I have, in my ward, there's some million-dollar homes out there. Million-dollar homes to, you know, 600, 900, $1,000 homes. You know, that equates, you know, that's a big tax bill. You know, you're looking at, you know, over $1,000 a year added on to their tax bill that some people are already paying. You know, and as Alderman Moisio was saying, there's, depends on where you're at. Some of these residents are paying $25,000 a year in taxes. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the audience, you know, please recognize that we have been doing our best, you know, to try to, you know, do what we can to make this city, to keep this city above water and, and keep it rolling. But that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Moisio?
Also, as a note, we've mentioned the fact that we've reduced our staff tremendously. The other thing, I don't, I don't have all the facts and figures with, but a lot of our unions are also, have taken zeros as far as raises. There are very few that have gotten a few raises. Most of them gotten zeros. Oh, everybody up here's, salary was frozen for the next four years?
Department.
Department, so we have all tried to, I get emails, make serious cuts. Well, I, I think 50% plus in your workforce is pretty serious. I think that's pretty serious. I mean, maybe some people would like us to go down to zero, that's fine. I don't know what you do, but that's okay. We might have no cops, no fire, no, no public works, maybe, but we, we can't operate like that. But we have, and, and it goes out to our workers also for noticing, most of our workers, I won't say all of them, not all of our unions, but most of our unions have understood that, and we negotiated with them, and they've understood the times that we're in, and they've taken the, taken what we've been able, or not been able to give to them. They've understood that. So I think that needs to be mentioned also, that our union employees, many of them have understood that. And our department heads, they don't have much of a choice, but they've understood that too. We've all tried to sacrifice and do what's right as far as trying to keep costs under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Do any have other comments or questions?
Okay, well, I would like to add a little something before we entertain either a motion at a certain percentage, or this gets held over for two weeks, to which will be the last meeting that we can deal with it at, failing a special call meeting. Number one, the 21% was not a grab, it wasn't greedy, it was what we needed to keep the government at the level it is, plus adding a very small number of positions, support positions that we have been doing without way too long, and, and we're starting to see the impacts on the organization. You know, we're lucky that we have some amazing people that work in this, in this organization. When you look at the city hall itself being down to almost 40, 45% of what we had for, just about three and a half, four years ago, that can't go on forever. So I just want to kind of lay out some of the things that will be affected, and that affect our lives, and some of it's been brought up, but I want to kind of put it in a nutshell. Number one, our ability to deal with abandoned homes is going to be hampered even further. We can't afford the legal work necessary to go after these homes, and it's impacting this community. I get a lot of complaints about abandoned homes across Waukegan. We go out and look at them, and it's frustrating not to be able to deal with these things. Because that is going to be one of the most detrimental things that will happen to the city of Waukegan, is the intrusion of rental properties for families that are low income into what have been traditionally middle-class neighborhoods. While the people coming into the homes might be great people, and, and more often than not they are, it is how it's perceived by the people living there today. And it's something that we have to think about as a community. How are we going to maintain the stability of our neighborhoods and try to retain the diminishing middle class that we currently have? It's quality of life. Second, we need more clerical and support staff in our code enforcement department. They cannot continue to operate at the level that they are now. It just can't keep going. We need our guys out on the road, we need them enforcing the codes and not spending time so much filing their reports and doing all the typing. We do need additional support there. We need an accountant in our finance department. Our audits come back with a finding that we don't have the appropriate accountant in that department, and we need that. We can't have audits that have findings in them like that. That's in the negative impact on our bond rating, on the perception by the business community on the city of Waukegan. We need an economic development director and support a budget for that. We've gone three years almost now without someone in that department. The city has to have that. We will not be able to compete. As the economy improves around us, now, we might lag behind a little bit, but as the economy improves around us, we have to get competitive with those cities that will be attracting businesses. And that requires a full-time, very knowledgeable professional to be able to do that. We have to fix our streets, our water lines, our sidewalks, literally, and I've said, I said this three, three years ago on my State of the City address, that the city is coming apart underneath our feet. The water, the water department, the water plant is ancient. We just had our reviews by the IEPA and FEMA and others, and there are things that we have to address there. Now, we have taken some things under, that we have fixed, but it's, it's still not enough. We don't have a rainy day fund of any substance. That's a real problem. Because we have to start saving money. We have to start putting money away. Our ability to run on a starvation diet is, is at an, at a limit. It's at an end. We cannot longer do this. And I'm very, very concerned that the impact that we've seen over the last three years, which is weighing on all of the people that work for you and try to make sure that your city's safe, that you have good streets and sidewalks, that you're treated well when you come into the building, even though you sometimes may be mad as heck at our, our employees and yell at them, they still do their job. And I can't in good conscience tell these people that it's going to be another year with less, and that we're not going to be able to be competitive in the economic development arena. Because being competitive there means we attract new businesses, that the tax burden that we all share will be spread out even more, and that it will be able to create new jobs. We're still at around 13% unemployment, and it's tough to attract jobs if you're up against communities that have full-time economic development directors. Even a city like Zion has one. We have to get competitive in this market. We just can't keep running on a ragtag budget that will continue to diminish the ability of the city to serve the people of the city of Waukegan. And whether it's more than 8%, 21%, 8% still is not going to give us what we need. Will, again, if the city council does vote to do that, and I've said this every time we've had a levy, that I will conform city government to what the levy is. And we just have to wait and see what we have to work with before I can tell you exactly what's that, what that is going to mean. But we're not greedy, we don't waste money. I think we've done a really good job at keeping the cost of this organization down. But we're reaching the end of being able to serve the community in this current environment and with our current staffing. So that's really all I wanted to add and ask, that if there was going to be a motion for either a percentage, as discussed here tonight, or request to hold this over for two more weeks, I would ask that we try to come to some solution right now about this.
I make a motion for 21%.
We have a motion by Alderman Beedling for 21%. Do we have a second on that? Seeing no second, it, it doesn't move forward.
I moved to hold it over for another two weeks. I'm fine with that.
We have a motion by Alderman Cunningham to hold it over for two more weeks. Can I, do we have a second? Seconded by Alderman Tempest. We'll just do a voice vote on that. Now, we realize though, this will be the last shot unless we do a special call meeting, but it's, really doesn't make sense to do it. So, all in favor of holding this item over until the next city council meeting, just say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We have one and opposed, the ayes have it. And hopefully, we'll get a chance to maybe talk a little bit more, present more information to you if you need it, so that you can see that what we're trying to do really is to preserve the services and the level of government that we have, plus adding those things that the city sorely needs. So, thank you, everybody, and I appreciate all your comments and, and everything. We will then move on to new business and recommended actions by corporation council. Item A, motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May, to approve the payroll dated December 3, 2012, in the amount of $1,319,807.90. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item B, motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May, for approval of bills dated December 3, 2012, in the amount of $1,707,863.21. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item C, motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to approve the raffle sale application for fat cat rescue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Now we move on to ordinances and resolutions. Item A, ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Carl Waggoner and Saki Properties LLC for the operation of a laundromat, zoning calendar number 2355, located at 1700 North Lewis. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item B, ordinance authorizing the sale of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, including 622 North Lewis Avenue. Motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item C, ordinance authorizing the purchase of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, including 1401 West Marlin Avenue. Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. That concludes the business portion of the meeting tonight. Next is the alderman's comments, and Mr. Clerk, and you'll excuse me for a moment, but I need to take a quick break while you're starting your comments. I'll be right back.
Alderman Cunningham.
Just two things. One, condolences to two people, long-term residents in First Ward and a part of city Waukegan's history, Ms. Bertha Copeland and Ms. Calhoun, both of Shiloh Baptist Church, passed this past week, so prayers and thoughts to their families, and know that they're longtime resident of this, of this community, have been involved in many capacities. Just want to extend that to their families. Thank you.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment and thank Tom Haggerty and City Yards. I want to say that they've done an excellent job with the leaf pickup this year. I believe that you're through. Am I, is that correct?
For the most part, yes.
For the most part. Well, Tom, thank you, you and your crew, and extending my thanks to them. They've done an excellent job. I don't think there's been any problem with the leaf pickups this year. Everybody has complimented me, and I've heard a couple of very positive things about it. The other thing I want to mention, I've gotten a few phone calls that have been about things that were mentioned here tonight, about paving of the streets. And some of the comments I got is that the south side was being ignored, and I don't think that's true. I want to let everybody know that Mr. Haggerty at City Yards contacted me, and I'm sure he contacted most of the other aldermen, and didn't see the purpose of paving a couple of blocks in each ward. And it made sense to me, and I think to the other aldermen, that it was better for him to do a large stretch of roads than it was to patch each ward individually, but that he would make the rounds of all the wards, that over the years, each ward would get more attention as needed. So that's just there to explain why you may think that you're being ignored, you're not. It's just that there are some roads in the city that are worse off than the ones you're probably at, or otherwise, we'd get to your roads. Thank you very much. That's the end of my comments.
Alderman Moisio.
Just one, just real quick, congratulations, and they say a shout-out to, although I'm not a Northern Illinois Husky, there was a, one of the starters on the football team
an excellent job, I don't think there's been any problem with the leaf pickups this year, everybody has complimented me on it, I've heard a couple of very positive things about it. The other thing I want to mention, I've gotten a few phone calls that have been about things that were mentioned here tonight, about paving of the streets, and some of the comments I got is that the south side was being ignored, and I don't think that's true, I want to let everybody know that Mr. Haggerty at City Yards contacted me, and I'm sure he contacted most of the other Aldermen, and didn't see the purpose of paving a couple of blocks in each ward. And it made sense to me, and I think to the other Alderman, that it was better for him to do a large stretch of roads than it was to patch each ward individually, but that he would make the rounds of all the wards, that over the years, each ward would get more attention as needed. So, that's just there to explain why you may think that you're being ignored, you're not, it's just that there are some roads in the city that are worse off than the ones you're probably at, or otherwise we'd get to your roads. Thank you very much, that's the end of my comments.
Alderman Moisio.
Just one, just real quick, congratulations, and they say a shout-out to, although I'm not a Northern Illinois Husky, there was a, one of the starters on the football team that they're, they're going to the Orange Bowl playing on January 1st against Florida State, kid named Rashawn Melvin is the starting cornerback for them, he's a Waukegan graduate, great kid, I had the pleasure of teaching him, I just wanted to give him a congratulations for going to the Orange Bowl, that's it.
Alderman Beedling.
I'm sure a lot of people aren't happy with my motion to 21 percent, however, our city's breaking down, and we need to invest in our city. As the President would put it, it would be an investment. I read a lot of stuff on my computer, and especially the report from our lobbyist, and there's a House Bill 1262, I'm not going to mention the sponsors' names, or the Senate sponsor, House Bill 1262, May 28, 2012, synopsis as introduced. "Amends the Department of Commerce and Economic Law of the Civil Administrative Code of Illinois. Requires the department to conduct a survey of certain businesses that are located in the state or have been identified as having left in the last 10 years. Provides that the survey must contain information regarding, one, why the business left, if applicable, and the location to which the business relocated, and, two, any incentives that are needed to keep and attract the business." This is a big part of our problem here, it's the state of Illinois, it's broken. I read, I subscribe to the Illinois Policy Institute, I suggest all you type them on your search engine, subscribe, they're trying to help solve the problems in this state. I'd like to read a short thing, it's not that short, but I'm going to take the time to read it. They produced this January 26, 2012. "One year after Illinois legislative leaders pushed through a record tax hike, the grades are in. The tax hike flunked. It failed to put Illinois on sound fiscal footing, it failed at restoring confidence in government's ability to meet serious challenges head-on, it failed to strengthen the state's economy, it failed to create opportunity and prosperity, it failed families and the businesses that want to be a part of making Illinois great again. In January 2011, lawmakers raised income tax rates by 46 percent on businesses, and a record 67 percent on individuals. The measure passed with the barest of majorities during the final hours of a lame duck session. It received the support of almost every legislator who retired a few hours later, or was defeated at the ballot box the previous November. Governor Pat Quinn, who would just run for election on a smaller tax increase, tossed his campaign pledge aside and seized the opportunity to transfer more money from Illinoisans to state government. At the time, advocates promised that the tax hike would usher in a new era in Illinois's fiscal affairs and economy at large. Among their claims, this is from Governor Pat Quinn, 'We have some temporary tax increases that are designed to pay our bills, get Illinois back on fiscal sound footing, and make sure that our state has a strong economy.'" This is Senate President John Colleton's comment. "The purpose of this bill is to raise enough money so that we can continue to pay our pensions without borrowing the money, to pay off our debt, to have enough money to pay the interest on that debt, and for the first time ever, establish caps on how much we can appropriate. We are even going to change our rules to basically turn over to the minority party the right to dictate whether or not there will be an extra spending over that cap, and it is going to work." This from House Majority Leader Barbara Flynn Curry. "Remember, the point of this income tax increase is not to expand programs, not to do brand-new things in Illinois state government, it is only intended to pay our old bills and deal with the structural deficit. This is not about new spending, it is about trying to bring ourselves in line with the problems of old debt and of a structural deficit. One year later, it's clear the tax hike was the solution to neither Illinois's fiscal problems nor its continuing economic decline. Today, things are worse, here's why. Number one, spending grew, bills went unpaid, and pension reforms stalled. With a flood of new tax dollars, urgent pressure to pass lasting structural spending reforms deflated, the state is incurring more expenses in fiscal year 2012 than it appropriated for, pushing more than $2 billion in obligations to the future. The state's backlog of unpaid bills and unaddressed obligations is now at $7 billion. The state has no plan to pay down this liability, let alone prevent it from growing again in the future. The tax hike allowed legislators to take a pass at resolving one of Illinois's most urgent fiscal, pardon me, problems, the unsustainable state pension systems. Ballooning pension costs already are squeezing out spending on education and other vital services. By not reforming pensions, the fiscal crisis will only deepen. This was confirmed in January, when Moody's Rating Agency downgraded Illinois, giving the state the worst credit rating in the nation. In justifying the rating, Moody's said Illinois took no steps to implement lasting solutions to its severe pension underfunding or to its chronic bill payment delays. Number two, Illinois's unemployment problem worsened. Illinois unemployment rate is now the fifth highest in the nation. Unemployment jumped to 10 percent in just the last seven months, up from 8.7 percent in April. That increase contrasts sharply with a drop in the U.S. rate to 8.6 percent from 9 percent over the same time period. Had Illinois simply followed national employment trends since January, there would be fewer unemployed Illinoisans. During the past year, Illinois employment numbers have moved the wrong way while neighboring states and the national trend have improved. Those who supported the tax hikes want to ignore the consequences of their actions, but the hundreds of thousands in want of employment demand a better approach." Finally, number three, the tax hike made Illinois less competitive and forced businesses to leave the state. The tax hike spurred a number of companies to leave or threaten to leave. The state resorted to handing out tax incentives to keep large businesses from leaving. This reinforced Illinois's reputation of favoring the powerful and connected at the expense of everyone else. It is this perception grounded in reality that keeps many entrepreneurs from even considering Illinois as a place to found or grow their business. Illinois's poor business environment is reflected in the Tax Foundation's respected State Business Tax Climate Index. A forthcoming 2012 edition will show a precipitous fall for Illinois, thanks almost entirely to the personal income and corporate income tax hikes. Overall, Illinois fell to 28th place in 2012, from 16th place in 2011. In particular, Illinois fell 16 places in the Corporate Sub-Index, dropping to 45th in the nation, from 29th prior to the tax hike. In passing the tax hikes, House Speaker Michael Madigan and Senate President John Colleton, along with the legislators who backed them, ignored the many voices warning that increasing taxes was the wrong thing to do. Quinn proceeded to sign the bill, the cost to families has been high, dollars lost directly to taxes, employment prospects lost indirectly. Illinois must reverse course, the solution, repeal the tax hike. It's both good policy and good politics. Illinoisans deserve better than being forced to feed a broken system. Once again, a lot of good information, Illinois Policy Institute, if you want to learn what's really going on in the state, the post-material that our newspapers fail to post. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Yes.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes, I do need to correct some thoughts that were said before, in regards to the annexation, said the street, there are, the property is ours anyway, the street property is ours, but the other land that was being donated to the Park District was on the tax rolls, so we will not be getting that anymore. And we do have staff costs involved, and legal notices involved, and all I was trying to do, to try to get our costs back. I hear so much talk about our tax, and there's one thing I wrote down, and I think we all need to see it, in regards to, I had a little notes, I forget which president it was that said it, but, "An economic downturn is not the time to raise taxes." And that's one of the things that one of our great presidents said, I forget which one, maybe somebody can help me. But I listened very closely, Mr. Beedling made some good points, the mayor made some good points, but I also heard some more new jobs being created. I don't know if we had those in the appro, we haven't had an appropriation ordinance yet, that I know of, I think that should be discussed in an appropriation ordinance, and be there so we know what we're talking about. And I don't know, we do need economic progress, the mayor's correct there, and being elected out, he's taken a bold and strong stand for what he believes, to that I take my hat off to him. But, I have people in my word calling me, Larry, I can't take anymore. But I think they could take a freeze, pay the same amount of taxes that they did, or 3, 4 percent higher next year, but not a big increase. And somehow we have to explain better, and maybe I'm not, ain't got it yet, maybe Tina can help me, and that is, we're taking the water bill, the water park, and we're putting that back on the tax bill, and what percentage point, dollar, we need to clarify that point better for the taxpayer, Your Honor, so they understand that we're talking, what, $20 a, what, $15 per quarter, $60 a year? So, their tax bill should at least $60 plus 4.9 percent more, at least, I mean, we need to, in the next meeting, if we can clarify that a little better, for the public.
And I want to thank the Alderman of the eighth ward for coming up with a, something, something, he thought it out very well, and even though he wouldn't let me hold something over today, I forgive him. Okay, thank you. Alderman May.
Yes.
Alderman Valco.
A couple of things, thank you, sir. The first one is, thank you, Ms. Westfall, for sending out in the water bills the most commonly asked questions about the ordinances, they finally came out, thank you for, and you and Stafford finally doing that. One thing, it's pretty important, I received an email a couple of days ago, in Spanish, with my limited knowledge of Spanish, I went through it, and it appeared to me, somebody asking for money, something had happened to their family, and it appeared to be a scam. So, to be on the safe side, I took it down to somebody who was fluent in the language, and what it is, a guy in Europe did business with a guy, and his family, bought some land.